Open the meeting this morning.
I don't know.
Start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Go ahead and ask for approval of today's agenda.
Make a motion to approve today's agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have utility permits and secondary roads.
You had two utility permits.
Okay.
One was for a line that's running along Highway 65 north of Iowa Falls, so it just barely comes into ours there at the end as it goes into Franklin County. And then the other one is for Alex Nelson, the four under O Avenue to some great businesses out there.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve Harden County utility permit application by Unite Private Networks for purpose of installing conduit and fiber optic cable along west side of Highway 65 from the north side of Iowa Falls to the Harden Franklin County line located in Section 1 and 12 of Harden Township.
I'll second it.
Have a motion to second. All in favor say aye.
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 Move to approve the Harden County utility permit application by Midland Power Cooperative for the purpose of wiring primary underground cable under O Avenue for new service at 32729 O Avenue in Providence Township.
And I'll second it.
Have a motion to second. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Next I have is approve the final plans for Culvert 1338 replacement project number FM-CO42-89-55-42.
You do have the motion to sign the Iowa DOT application.
Oh, okay. So, let's consider this and we'll go back to the utility permit.
Okay. So, these plans are for, this is a drainage ditch project they did a couple of years ago, so this is the very end of it as it's crossing Highway D-65. So, it is pretty much replacing the, there's like three smaller metal pipes there, so they're being replaced with one big eight-foot-by-eight-foot concrete box. And we'll have to pave over the road. So, these are the plans, Brewster up, you got it done pretty quick, I was pretty happy with that. We threw it together fast enough. None of this will come out of Harden County funds, it's all paid for by our state dollars that we get. That's about all there is to this one. Any questions on it?
I don't believe so. Makes a lot more sense having the big cement, one big cement fixture instead of the three small ones. Okay, I'll make a-
It was that way because it was a bunch of tiles before.
Yeah, okay.
Now it's an open ditch.
And we changed that to an open ditch through the drainage district.
Yeah. And the south side of the road is natural stream. So, it's where your drainage district ends.
Okay. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the final plans for Culvert 13388 replacement project number FM-CO42-89-55-42.
I'll second that.
Have a motion to second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We'll return back up to this third utility permit, the Iowa Department of Transportation permit.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the Iowa DOT application and utility agreement by Unite Private Networks for the purpose of installing conduit and fiber optic cable along the west side of Highway 65 from the north side of Iowa Falls to the Harden Franklin County line located in Sections 1 and 12 in Harden Township.
I'll second that.
Have a motion to second. All in favor approving the permit say aye.
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 All right.
I just had one question about that Culvert thing. Okay, so that is Culvert resulting from drainage project in Drainage District?
Yes.
So, drainage tiles, not stuff that will flow into that? And then, how big is that?
Eight-foot-by-eight-foot.
It's eight-foot-by-eight-foot for this drainage project, and then where does that go?
It's a natural stream below that.
And then it goes into a natural stream?
Yep.
Thank you very much for making that clear to me.
Yep.
I appreciate it.
No problem.
Also, I may just clarify a little bit on that. The county is responsible between fence line to fence line for drainage?
Sure, yeah, I understand that. I was just wanting to, you know, figure out where it's coming from. I appreciate that.
Okay. Next item we have is public comments. Anybody wishing to address the board on anything not on the agenda today?
I guess I could run something by you guys.
Sure.
Okay, so Iowa will go into the city of Alden tonight. We need to be replacing that bridge that goes over the Iowa River soon.
Okay.
So, I have a resolution agreement, so if I can have them sign, I'll come back to you in two weeks. My initial proposal is going to be for us to do all the engineering work, and Alden would be responsible for any, you know, if any right-of-way needs to be purchased. I wouldn't think so in that area, but you never know. And then we would split the construction costs 50/50.
Okay.
So, that's my plan.
All right.
Okay.
We got Bernie here also.
Yeah.
This will be a good time.
Bernie, do you want to speak at this point?
Sure. You three had questions about the bill that I submitted for the burial of the veteran. The veteran named Stephen Bennett died in a nursing home in Malcolm back in October of 2017. His son came to me to help apply for Veterans Affairs or Federal VA burial benefits. I last had a visit with the VA, and they said it's be May or June at the earliest before they will even look at the application we submitted back in November. So, I made a deal with my counterpart at Palasique County to pay 300 of the bill and said we would pay 300 of the bill. Now, I realize that the county has a policy of not paying for burials for deaths outside the county. But here, I think it's, I need you to understand that we're going to get our $300 back because when the son gets his check from the VA come May, June, July, when the VA calls up a check for him, then he's going to pay that, give me that check, and then I'll split it between Harden County and Palasique County.
Okay.
So, I'd ask for an exception to the burial policy based on that scenario.
So, that's a whole lot more clear.
Yeah, I wasn't understanding that we were getting the money back.
Yeah, I didn't understand that either.
It just sounded like a duplication of benefits.
And I never really spelled that out to you.
Yeah.
That's my error for not clearly spelling that out to you previously.
So, otherwise, we'd be kind of setting a precedence on changing our policy.
No, but we're going to get the money back from the Federal VA.
Okay. Sounds good. Yes, Julie.
Oh, public comment here. So, we're now looking for a second Assistant County Attorney. Did Ms. Patterson or Mr. Servick resign?
That'll be in our change of status in, under number 22.
Oh. Oh, there's number 22. Okay. Yeah, it's the crowded one.
Anything else this morning? JD, have anything? All right. Okay, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. There's two sets of minutes to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of February 12th meeting.
I'll second.
Have a motion to second. All in favor say aye.
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 The second set. Nancy, what was the date on the second set?
February 7th.
Okay, that was the year.
Okay. I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from February 7th.
Second.
Have a motion to second. All in favor say aye.
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 The next would be approval for claims for payment. There would be two sets of those as well.
I'll move to approve the claims for payment, both sets.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Have a motion to second. All in favor to approve the claims for payment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The next item is number nine, acknowledgment of receipt for animal feeding construction permit, Bob Shager site 27 Alden Township. So, at this point, the acknowledgements are just acknowledging that the receipt, the permits for application have been received, and then next we'll set the public hearing dates for those sites. And then, this morning, Ms. Juber and I, along with our sanitarian spoke, and it was brought up that any documentation, scientific-based stuff that would like to be considered could be submitted to Jessica at any time, you know, for consideration to help her in her review of the applications.
As soon as possible.
Yep. And that'll help her do her job so it's not, you know, right spur of the moment, okay? So... So, we're on number nine.
I'll make a motion to acknowledge the receipt of the animal feeding construction permit for Bob Shager site.
Excuse me?
Section 27 Alden Township.
Hold on one second.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion to second. Discussion from the board?
This is a 5496 hundred-head of finishing swine, one building.
Okay. Renee, anything?
Nope.
Ms. Juber.
Is this a new site or an expansion?
An expansion.
Expansion.
In that case, I would like this one and the one for Shager Holdings, both the same man, put on indeterminate hold.
Jessica, what?
What do you mean?
Yep.
Well, I looked through the information. Are the three existing buildings tax exempt?
I don't know why the-
The services are agricultural, like, they are. Lance, do you know?
That's a Don question.
I thought the buildings are taxed but not the pits.
That's fine.
That's a downhill question.
In that case, the reason I'm asking that the two expansions be put on indeterminate hold until an investigation can be done regarding property taxes. These two plots, sites, whatever it is you want to call them, have within three-quarters of an acre of the same area. Both of them have three buildings. On one, it holds 3,300 hogs. On the other, it holds 4,212 hogs. However, property tax-wise, 359 Pork is paying $3,438 annually in property taxes, whereas the Bob Shager expansion only pays 940. Now, I may not be an expert on this, but I'm curious, I'm wondering, how can there, how there can be such a difference?
Okay.
That's a Don question. I'd have to see how he assesses it.
And this is just acknowledging the receipt, saying we've got it.
My point is, until this is investigated, it is looked at, it is determined why there is a difference, there should not even be a public hearing. There's no point.
If we don't acknowledge it, Jess, am I correct that if we don't acknowledge it, then it would just move to the DNR if we fail to acknowledge it?
In that case, I'd like to bring up another point. The county received these two applications February 2nd. Today, unless I miss my guess, is February 21st.
Correct.
That's 19 days. However, the law says that the county has 14 days. And not intending to be a thorn in anyone's side because obviously some people seem to think women should stay barefoot and in the kitchen, that seems to be a violation of the rules.
We receive a list of dates from our DNR representative Cindy Garza that says which, what date the applicant or the notice that we receive the application has to be published by, and the date on that form was November, February 21st.
But according to the rules and the law, it should be 14 days.
Well, that's just what Cindy told us, and she's the kind of ultimate authority on this, so I can look into that for sure.
And like I said, I'd like to repeat my request that it be put on indeterminate hold until this can all be investigated.
I have a motion and a second on the floor.
My thought is, we're just, like we said, we're acknowledging receipt. We have received them. So, I think we could move on with that. We're not holding a public hearing tomorrow, so I think there is ample time to look into some of these other, other things. I mean, as far as, we can talk to Don in the next day or so regarding the assessment issue for sure.
According to the property tax receipt, these figures-
Right, and-
I'm not disputing that, I'm just-
Correct. And I think that's reasonable to have Jessica consult with Don and determine that and bring that information back to us. In regards to the dates and deadlines, I'm just going by what is on the DNR documentation at this point.
Jessica?
Okay. Any other discussion? Yes, Ms. Lloyd.
I'd just like, and I don't think you probably can answer that, but how many hog confinements do we have in Harden County versus how many farms we have in Harden County? Is there an actual number on that?
I think the definite, you know, depends on the definition of a farm, also.
Well, I'm talking like, you know, if you farm the ground, if the ground's farmable, tillable, or whatever, compared to hog confinements. I mean, Harden County is, you know, like, whenever you talk to somebody in Harden County, all it's known for is hog confinements. And we're kind of getting a bad name, so I mean, when, when is this going to, like, really, I mean, you can't even drive hardly a mile in Harden County without a hog confinement. I mean, it's getting that bad. When do we, and you guys take charge and put halt to some of this?
We don't have the authority to do that.
Why don't you? If you get the permit, why don't you, why can't you say no?
Pauline, if we don't accept the permit, it goes to the DNR and they get built anyway.
Yep. I'm going to, we'll wrap up this item. Go ahead, Julie.
When you do have in front of you peer-reviewed research, and you choose to not look at it and take points-
Julie, they said that they, Jessica said that she was going to, they, there's only going to drop her, but-
She's going to take this, that your information, and they can still appeal. There's only going to drop.
Good.
Yep, they, okay.
That's good. But it needs to be addressed, and decisions should not be made, you know, we're at a public hearing, you hear all this stuff. Nope, oh, oh, this is our decision.
All right.
Jess.
I'm going to, hold on just a second. I'm just, thank, I appreciate it. I'll let you have the conversation afterwards.
Jess hit her hand.
Yep, Jess, briefly.
I just want to say that's why we are suggesting that you guys bring the information. I know that that wasn't clear through the last public hearing, but now, just like as soon as we get it, like, bring it. Because it's really hard to look at that new information while we're in the middle of a public hearing and make a decision on that.
Which is why I brought up the property taxes now.
Well, when we give you this information, and you study it, and you see a problem, then, and you take points, would you be contacting that hog factory person and telling them, this is what, this is what we found? Here's your time to fix it, and you can change your stuff now. Is that, is that how that's going to work?
Yeah, if there are discrepancies between what the developer submits in Master Matrix and the county, then we do discuss with them that these are the differences, how are we going to fix it?
And I've asked Jessica to please work hard to increase the effective communication with, whether it's water testing, whether it's CAFO sites, just the more communication, the better.
I agree.
So... All right, thank you. Okay. So, I have a motion. All in favor of approving the acknowledgement, say aye.
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 The next would be to set the date and time for here, public hearing.
I'll make a motion to set the date and time for the public hearing, the Bob Shager site, section 27 of Alden Township, being March 8th. Location 506 West Street, Alden, at 5:30.
I'll second it.
Have a motion to second. All in favor say aye.
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 The next is item 11, acknowledgment, receipt of animal feeding operation construction permit, 359 Pork Site, Shager Holdings, section 15 of Buckeye Township.
I'll make a motion to acknowledge the receipt of the animal feeding operation construction permit, 359 Pork Site, Shager Holdings, Inc., of section 15, Buckeye Township.
I'll second that.
Have a motion to second. All in favor approving the acknowledgment of the receipt, say aye.
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 Next would be set the, yes ma'am?
And I would like to repeat my request on this one, that it be put, and I remember the, what you said, that it be put on indeterminate hold until property taxes issue can be investigated.
Okay.
I just wanted to make it a point for this item.
Okay. So, we'll return to item number 12, set the time and date for the public hearing.
Make a motion to set the date and the time for the public hearing of 359 Pork Site, Shager Holdings, Inc., section 15 of Buckeye Township to be March 8th at 506 West Street, Alden, at 6:00 PM.
I'll second it.
Have a motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
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 The next I have an acknowledgment of receipt of animal feeding operation construction permit, Eldridge Finisher Farm/WFC Farms LLC, section 13 of Ellis Township.
I'm making a motion to acknowledge the receipt of the animal feeding operation construction permit, the Eldridge Finisher Farm/WFC Farms LLC, section 13 of Ellis Township.
I'll second that.
I have a motion to second. All in favor of approving or acknowledging the receipt of the permit, say aye.
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 May I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
I did not see one, but is there some sort of waiver to the nearest res, from, signed by the nearest resident regarding separation distance someplace that is not in the application?
Since they, because they're not taking any, they're not taking any points.
No, actually, according to the satellite photo, the nearest residence for this 5,000 hog new site is 1,170 feet, which is illegal by 700 feet, in addition to which they took 85 points.
Jessica, will you check that?
So, they are, I mean, if I-
It is then an illegal site by the rules and should be immediately rejected.
They're taking less points because there's smaller separation distance.
No, it does not even meet minimum separation distance.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and, while she looks, we'll go ahead and move through the agenda, okay, Donna? I mean, kind of-
And again, not to be a part of anybody's side.
No, no, I, yep, but-
And like I said, at this point, it's just acknowledging receipt of the application.
But at this point, it, to me, it appears to be illegal and not even worth a public hearing.
Could you tell me, I mean, do you guys know exactly the number of hog confinements that we have in Harden County?
I know.
I have that information, but I don't have it for me.
Last count that I was aware of, 248. We are number five in the, in the state of most hog confinement.
Where are you, so are you talking about the house that's on the property?
No.
Which, which house are you talking about? Because they do have, they're not below the minimum.
Okay, I'm going to-
I presume, okay, that one.
Continue.
Yeah, we're going to go ahead and continue. So, I'm on item number 14. We're going to set the date and time for a public hearing.
I'll make a motion to set the date and time for the public hearing, Eldridge Finisher Site, WFC Farms LLC, section 13 of Ellis Township, to be March 12th in the large conference room at 9:00 AM.
This large conference room?
I'll second it.
Wind that up in the area where it sits.
Hold on, ma'am. Okay, yep. I have a motion to second. Any discussion amongst the board? Okay. Donna, go ahead.
Why isn't it up in the area?
Owassa doesn't have a building that we can utilize.
Oh, really?
This is Ellis Township.
They do have a building, but we, nobody's requested me to be there, so.
Right, well, that and just the logistics of that area. So, yep. All in favor of approving the date and time for a public hearing, say aye.
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 312-18.
9:00 AM.
Okay. Next I have number 15, acknowledge receipt of the animal feeding operation construction permit, Chaplin Finisher Farms/ME Farms LLC, section 16 of Alden Township.
I'll make a motion to acknowledge the receipt of the animal feeding operation construction permit, Chaplin Finisher Farms/ME Farms LLC, section 16 of Alden Township.
I'll second that.
Okay. Have a motion to second. Any discussion amongst the board?
Two new 2,500-head deep pit swine finisher confinement buildings for a new swine confinement facility.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Next item would be number 16, set the date and time for public hearing for Chaplin Finisher Farms/ME Farms LLC, section 16, Alden Township.
Move to set the date and time for the public hearing, Chaplin Finisher Farms/ME Farms LLC, section 16 of Alden Township, to be March 8th at 506 West Street, Alden, at 6:30 PM.
I'll second it.
Have a motion to second. Any discussion amongst the board? All in favor, say aye.
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 Could you repeat that, where the date, the time, the place?
March 8th, 506 West Street, Alden, 6:30 PM.
Same place we were last time.
So, we have one at 5:30, one at 6:00, and one at 6:30 that night.
Three of them?
Yes.
Wait, wait a minute.
Say that again?
Yeah, yeah. Start with the first one again. Repeat all this stuff to me so I have a better idea.
Okay.
Either that, or we could-
Julie, can I just hand these to you?
If you do that, that would be great, thank you.
Okay. Next thing, I'm going to pass the torch to Mica regarding a premier printing contract and Bernie, correct? Okay. Go ahead, Mica, or Bernie.
What you have a for, you, we have a printing contract with Premier, and it's a county-wide print program, but anytime we make changes to it, we have to have the board supervisors sign, kind of like an addendum. We have added another printer to the printing program for the VA office at their remote location, satellite office at the American Legion in Iowa Falls. And the VA office is purchasing this printer outright, but we do pay for maintenance, and so we are adjusting the contract by $12 a month to include his printer into the print program for the remainder of the contract, which still has like three years on it.
Okay. Okay, so I will make a motion to approve the premier printing contract update.
I will second.
Have a motion to second. All in favor of approving the contracts, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, I have the Recorder's Monthly Report. Lori's here, do you have any other, nothing to add? Okay. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve Recorder's Monthly Report.
I will second that.
I have a motion to second, all in favor of approving the Recorder's Monthly Report, say aye.
Aye.
January.
Yep.
For January, okay.
Aye.
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 Next, Lynn Adams is here to talk about Community Services.
Yeah, I don't think this would require any action, but I wanted to share just some, an update with several things that have happened recently in regard to our department, Community Services Department, and then also related to the Central Iowa Community Services Region, which we're a part of. So, I did kinda just put some bullet points down here for your information. I know you've got a lot of business to say, but I wanted to cover those. First of all, I just wanted to let you know, and BJ sits on the CICS Board, so of course he can add to this or, or correct me if I get it wrong, but Green County did vote to leave the region they were in, they were in the heart of Iowa region, and I even included a little map here so you can kinda see where Green County is, but they did request to become part of our region. At last month's meeting, the CICS Board did approve that. The Green County Board of Supervisors has approved a resolution, and they also adopted our 2080 agreement, so effective July 1st, they will become part of our region. One good thing is, they're required to bring their fund balance to our region, so I think they have almost a $400,000 fund balance and will become part of our regional fund balance. They will also need to levy at the same rate as our region rather than the region they were in, so they'll, they'll be levying at the same rate that's approved through our region. And another good thing is that we'll be able to spread our administrative costs because we're not gonna replay, we're not gonna add another person for that county on the administrative team. We'll just pick up, you know, that and cover it with what we have, so it'll help also with spreading those costs out.
Good.
And then I wanted to tell you about some, I think this is exciting, some service changes that'll affect Hardin County and all the, all the counties in our region. First thing there is the mobile crisis response, which is a new service in our region, and, you know, I feel like this is something that we've needed for a long time. Basically, it'll, and there was an RFP that went out, but IRL evolved the contract, and they will have three teams throughout the region, and these are professionals, these are people that have to have special training to actually go out and handle crisis situations out in, they can go to people's homes, they can go to the school if they need to, in the community if they're having a problem, so, and it'll be dispatched through our current crisis line. So, anybody, you know, police officers can make a call, but it can be anybody basically that can make the call to the crisis line. The crisis line, they are trained also, so they can assess the situation, if they feel they're needed, they can dispatch them. It's a Medicaid funded service, so, you know, we will end up paying for some people who don't have Medicaid, but they should be able to get paid through Medicaid most of the time for that service. And so, we're having a meeting on March 6th in Iowa Falls, and I've invited, JD's gone, but I've invited the Sheriff's Department and Police Departments, you know, we've invited ministerial groups, anybody that might think they would ever wanna use this service to come and learn, because this is gonna be a, a great service for, for Hardin County, and I'm really excited about it. Another thing is our expanded jail diversion. If you remember, I think it's been about a year ago, we started a jail diversion program that included four counties, and because he's gotten so many clients, we're now gonna, they're gonna add another jail diversion person, so we'll have a person just for Hardin and Franklin Counties, and, you know, Franklin doesn't have a jail, so it'll be primarily Hardin, and they'll probably be working out of our office over here, and so that person will be an intensive case manager that'll work directly with the people that are in the jail, so, either to help keep them from going to jail, or when they're ready to leave to transition them out of jail. Also, the telehealth services, Hanson Hospital has started this service, they just started about two weeks ago, and they are, they are the final hospital in our region, so now every ER in our region, even if they don't have an inpatient psyche in their ER, they have the ability to use the telehealth, so somebody can come to the ER through internet, they can, basically, they have an appointment with a psychiatrist, you know, through Skype, and they can, at that point, then, they can recommend, you know, that this person doesn't even need to be in the hospital, or if they need to be in another hospital for mental health, then they are actually responsible for that, which is another big thing, because right now, our ER, you know, spends hours sometimes trying to find a bed somewhere in the state that can take a person. Now, it's, it's ITP's responsibility, and this is something too that's funded through the region, so there's really no cost to the local hospital, or other than they have to, you know, have a laptop and stuff, but, so that's another. And I did just get the report for January, and I wanted to let you know, like, in January, there were 124 of these telehealth done throughout our region, so that's, that's quite a few. I think we've had, I just called the hospital yesterday, I think we've had four or five so far in the last week or two at Hanson Hospital.
Perfect.
So, I think that's a, that's a big improvement. We also have that service available in the jails, and I think all the jails in our region are signed on. We've had minimal usage here, I think we've had four total since we started, so I'd like to really see, you know, that, that improve and increase. But that's another big improvement in service. And then peer support, Central Iowa Recovery, which does our IPR program, which is a program that was started through our counties, they now have expanded to do peer support, so we have a specialist just for Hardin County who now has about 15 cases where, and that's a peer support, is basically somebody who's had a lived experience, who's been through mental health, but they're now reporting recovery where they can help others, so they're available basically 24/7 by phone, and they also have like face-to-face meetings at least once a month with individuals that are, that are working with them. And that's another service that is funded through Medicaid, so it's not a, you know, it's an enhancement of service, but it's, yeah, it's not county dollars, it's Medicaid dollars that are paying for that. So, those are all things that we've had recently, recent service improvements. And then, I did attach just for your information, and I won't go through in detail, but, so you can see the, kind of the mid-year report for FY18, as far as the number of, you know, applications we do through the region, the number of people we've served. I'll just point out that, that I and one other service coordinator for the 10 counties, we supervise the service coordinators in each county, so each county has at least one, but regionwide, we've had a 22% increase in the number of people served for the comparable period of last year. So, for last year, we were averaging 579, this, this year, we're averaging 628 per month for the first half of the year. And then for applications, that's also increased about 26%. That's up from 140 per month last year to 161 this year. So, our, our service coordinators, like, for example, here in Hardin County, we have Joni Hamilton, and then we have Mary Rosenthal, who's a specialist, so she mostly goes out and does assessments and stuff, but between the two of them, for Hardin County, cover most of those, and then I supervise Hardin, Story, Franklin, Hamilton, and Marshall. And then we haven't decided yet how we're gonna cover Green, we may reassign some counties or whatever, so. Just, just information for you to keep updated, so BJ, if you have anything to add.
Can you just talk about, I think it's important to note when we are audited on the quality of services offered, how well we do, do in our core services, and as well as those optional or above and beyond things that we do. Do you wanna kinda talk about how that audit, that, that looks for the region?
I think we, well, the state does now, we have to report, currently, I think it's monthly, but there's a bill that we may go to quarterly, but we have to report, especially like in the area of crisis services and things, each, each month to the state, and then they basically do what they call a dashboard each year, and I mean, we could make that available too, if you wanna see it, but our region does, does very well. We are meeting all the core services. It doesn't mean that we've got every core service available in every county, but, for example, like the ACT program, which is a sort of community treatment, there's a pilot project, you know, going like in Story County right now. Hopefully someday that will expand, but because we have that available, we can meet the criteria that's from the state. But they're looking at also moving some of the services, which are called like Core Plus, to actual core services, so, I mean, ACT is one of those that the state's looking at moving from just if you have the money and can do it, you need to do it, to this is a requirement. I know some of the other things that are in that legislation would be like a 20, or a statewide crisis line, which I fully support. We have our own crisis lines for the region, but there's, every mental health center also has to have one, I mean, it makes so much sense that we all go together, have one line, everybody in the state knows what number to call, and I think it would also reduce the cost, because we're paying the foundation too, and somebody else, you know, so. But yeah, I think we do really well. Of course, we're probably biased, but I think we're probably the best region, I don't know. And we're, and in size, we're, you know, we're in a nice size because we're, we're big enough that we can do some of this stuff, but yet, you know, there's a region north to us that's had some issues, because they are so big, they're like 23 counties, but then there's some regions that are like, you know, only have a population of 40,000 people, and it's hard to really provide some of these services with that small a base, because we're at about, I think we're close to 400,000.
Yep, 423, I think.
Yeah. And Green County, you know, it's not a very big county, it's only 9,000 population, and we are the smallest county, but I think the board and the administrative team, we all felt that it benefits would outweigh any negative for bringing them in. You know, there's other, like Woodbury County left their region, they're trying to, they don't have a home yet, they haven't found a region yet that wants to accept them, and they're a huge county, so. And then there's a meeting Friday up in Fertile, which I'm gonna go to. The DHS director's coming up there to meet with a bunch of the counties up in the CSS region, which is that big region up north, because there's been some issues up there, and so we kinda wanna go and hear what the director says, and, you know, it's DHS that's advocating for some of these changes that are in legislation, so I might be able to get more about that, too.
Perfect.
Kinda says something for, for people that wanna come here, or I mean, other counties that wanna come here, says something for our services. And these are all great additions for us, I think, too.
Yeah, I think they'll really be good for Hardin County.
Thank you for coming, Lynn, and anybody that Lynn's easily accessible over in the Annex Building, and he has the old county attorney's office on the second floor, lower levels, Community Services, that way, yep. So, yep, he's got treasure troves of information.
Kitty, go to the jail.
Yep. Okay, thank you, Lynn, I appreciate it. The next we have, item number 20, would be change of status in the county attorney's office.
I'll make a motion to accept the employee change of status for Lucas Sturbick, who has submitted his resignation. He was full-time as Assistant County Attorney, and his last date of employment will be, or, yes, will be February 21st, 2018.
Julie, yes?
I will second that.
Oh, sorry. Okay, yes, Julie?
Oh, no, I don't have a question, I was just looking.
No, I didn't. It's kinda hard to read, but Lucas accepted a position, a prosecuting job as an Assistant County Attorney in Story County. He resides in Nevada, so just...
Sure, yeah, I just...
Yep. I have a motion to second, all in favor of approving the change of status, say aye.
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 Next, I have a change of status in the Recorder's Office.
I will make a motion to approve the change of status for the hiring of Laura Eisenhower as temporary seasonal part-time help at the hourly rate of $12 an hour. She will assist staff on a temporary basis through software transition project, process. Dates of employment to be February 15th to June 30th, 2018.
I will second that.
Okay, a motion to second. Lori, do you have anything to add?
No, just that it's gonna be great to have her during this transition, because it's crazy busy with this conversion, so, yeah.
Okay. All in favor of approving the employee change of status, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item 22, other business. Any other business? Yes, Donna?
Um, I've been thinking about the Kyle, our, our discussion.
Mm-hmm.
Her point she brought up. Does anyone know when the Kyle James draft permit was received by the county? Okay, so, okay, so, when will the vote for our conversation prior to the meeting? When will a vote for an appeal happen? If, because after all, the meetings don't come till we can know.
Right. If Jessica says that there is something valid in there and believes that there's a legal issue, then she'll let us know, and then we can schedule something.
Okay. And do we have any idea when that will happen?
I mean, I'll look at it this way, see if there are any things valid in there, and I'll let them know right away, and then they can maybe have a...
Yeah, I don't, I, it really depends on what you...
Would be fair to say when the construction permit comes in, then you could set the time and date for, for everything there. I, I don't have a construction.
Well, it would first be a draft permit, because once the permit is issued, it's over.
Right.
And you only have two, 14 days, I believe it is?
To reveal.
The time the draft permit is issued.
Correct.
And I have one more thing.
Okay.
Regarding the conversation last that you and I had, and trees at the Endeavor Farm site by our house, the Iowa Select representative said that once construction is over, they would be planting trees at that site, and as you said, we have it on record, they have to. Construction is obviously over, and I'm still looking for, forward to trees being put up to...
The conversation was construction on the new construction?
New construction.
No one said new. It was only said, "Construction is over."
But we were talking about the new site at that time as well.
Well, it's not a new site, it was a new building, but...
Or a new building on that site, you're correct.
But still, for all intents and purposes, construction is now over, and I was wondering if you had heard anything regarding when they intend to plant the trees.
The only thing I've heard is they've offered to plant trees on your property. You've already told me that you've already planted trees.
420, in fact, trees and shrubs, to try and do something about that site.
And I haven't talked to them since.
And according to Megan, there is plenty of room for them to plant trees on their site.
I can ask them.
Well, you seem to think it was important to have it on record, and I just wanted my request for information also on that.
They mentioned, they said that when we were talking about the new construction site, that they would plant trees. They said that in the meeting.
When construction was over, that's what they said.
I would have to go back and look to see exactly what they said, but from my understanding, it was the new construction, but that's what we were talking about at the time.
No, because, as you and I have discussed...
But let's go back and ask them.
...when they said if instead of when, I said, "Why wasn't it done five years ago then? If that's what you guys do, why wasn't it done five years ago?" I don't know, I wasn't here.
Out there, I, I wasn't part of that conversation, correct?
I understand.
Okay, you made it sound like I was out in the hall in that conversation.
No, but I did inform you of it.
What I said was, in the meeting in here, they said that they would put trees up.
When construction was over, okay, we can go back and look at it.
And that's what they said, not me.
Well, no, but you did tell me they have to.
No, they pointed out that they would do that.
Okay.
Any other business? Yes, Julie?
Were there any changes or amendments made to this agenda within the 24-hour period before this 10:00 AM meeting started?
Yeah, so, the change of status on Lucas, we just received at 9:00 AM this morning.
No, we didn't.
So, that was the change I made.
It was on the agenda, but we added a document.
We added a document to the website in the last minute, 24 hours.
You removed the HR.
I mean, we knew we were on the agenda.
Oh, but that was more than 24 hours ago. Oh, but that was more than twenty-four hours ago.
That's the only change.
That was more than twenty-four hours.
Oh, I thought she was saying prior to the twenty-four hours.
Yeah, in fact, we actually, because of the weather, we knew that was gonna be an issue. We published the agenda on the website Monday night.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay. Anything else? Yes?
How many, so in the county attorney's office now, how many people do we have then?
Attorneys?
Yeah.
Attorney Dunn is part-time, and then Dee is full-time. And then as of today, Lucas will not be there. So one and one point five FTE.
Plus a legal assistant and two secretaries. So we have a, we have a legal assistant?
Mm-hmm.
And then this, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your...
Yeah.
Renee, Dee?
Dee, yep.
Renee, Denise.
Denise.
Okay, so is that what we're going to say by then? It's just Dee and this other part-time person and Dunn?
Yes. We have three legal jurisprudicant attorneys that are assigned to the county attorney's office. Attorney Dunn, county attorney Dunn is part-time. Then as of today, there'll be one FTE open and the other attorney. So two and a half FTE is the threshold.
So they will be hiring to replace him. So Lucas Sturbick resigned, and I think Rick will be hiring or putting in...
Here he has.
Yes.
Yeah, he's putting that out there already. So he's going to be hiring to replace Lucas.
So then, so then if we replace Lucas, then what?
Two full-time employees and Rick is part-time.
Define what part-time is.
Less than thirty-seven and a half hours a week.
No.
How come we have so many?
And the attorneys?
How many attorneys?
I think Lucas is, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think Lucas's main area of work was drug charges, am I correct?
Drugs, criminal, and other criminal aspects. So did all the prosecuting for, you know, OWIs and drug crimes and those items.
We have that many bad people in Harden County?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Really?
That's why we now have two, well, county has one drug dog, the city of Akley has a drug dog. So that's increased the number.
Do we have any? I know, like, from a regular attorney's office, you know, you have billable hours. Do we have accounting of what would be billable hours for the attorney? What they're getting done over there? Is there any accounting of actual billable hours?
I don't.
Or hours devoted to each case or whatever, something like that?
I don't know what they keep track of.
See if Rick, yeah.
I just believe I have.
Yep. I know some OWI cases may take twenty minutes and some may take twenty hours, just as an example, so. Yep, so.
So if we have this many county attorneys, then how come? Well, I'll just use my daughter's case. She's waited over two, two years and some, and she's not getting any results. I mean, she...
Without knowing the details, a lot of times it's a court system thing, not at the state level. The docket, they set the schedule and everything, it's...
The courts are underfunded is the deal.
Yep.
And they're even cutting them more.
She's supposed to get reimbursement from a person. And it's like every time we check with the county attorney's office, it's like, "Oh, we don't know where this person is," or, "We can't..."
So has it gone through the court already and?
It's gone through the court.
Oh, so it's, because collection, that's, that's two different things.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's different than the county attorney.
But the county attorney is supposed to keep eye on her, on this gal's probation officer and keep track of all of it. So when the gal doesn't make a payment, that he can keep track of on it. And it's like nothing's getting done. So if we have all these county attorneys, then why isn't stuff getting done?
That's a question that you'd have to have the attorney here to answer. I can't answer for him, and neither one of these two could answer that question either.
I've asked county attorneys that several times, and I can't get any answers.
I'd be more than happy to set up a meeting with the clerk of court and, you know, one of the county attorneys to talk to you about how, you know, the collections process. Trust me, it took me close to eight years to collect on a two hundred and fifty dollar. And all of a sudden, I get a check in the mail for two hundred and fifty dollars after many years, and I was surprised, so.
I've got a case in Colorado that's thirty years old, I'm still working on it.
Yeah, so. I can, I'd be happy to help facilitate a conversation with the clerk of court and Attorney Dunn.
Okay.
Okay.
Because I didn't, I guess I just didn't understand that part of it.
Yeah. Any other business? Harry Nunn asks for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.